Hi and welcome to the next edition of reclaiming my mind. I am your host, Jessica Vaughn, also president of the Democratic Progressive Caucus of Tampa Bay. And today we have with us another Tampa City Council candidate, Walter L. Smith, the second, who is a candidate for District One, which is at large, also known as citywide, which means if you are in the city of Tampa, you can vote for Walter L. Smith, the second.
Yes.
Thank you for joining us, Walter.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I know everyone's been busy candidate forums. There's so many of them. And coming all the way over here afterwards, we appreciate everyone who comes out and makes themselves accessible.
Well, we're glad that you're doing this for us. That's it's a big thing that you're doing. So thank you.
Oh, all right. Well, what I like to do before we kind of jump into hardcore politics is find out a little bit about the background of a candidate. You know, kind of get to know them as a person, aside from just their political persona. So I heard quite a few interesting stories about you. So feel free to tell me, you know, kind of about your background.
What kind of interesting stories you hear about me, Jessica Vaughn?
Well, we'll get into those.
We'll get into that later, right? Well, yeah, yeah. Well, first of all, again, thank you very much for having me on the show. I appreciate it. I am, I am a native of Florida, right? Of all the children born in my family, I'm the only one born in Tallahassee.
Oh.
The only one born in Tallahassee. I'm proud of that. My family, however, is has been in Tampa for 110 years.
Wow.
Yes, 110 years.
Wow.
I currently live in a home that my grandfather built in 1920. And, and he came here, my grandfather, Judge Williams, on my mother's side, came to Tampa as a 14 year old. And he went back to Adapogus, Georgia, around Adapogus Bainbridge area. He was a sharecropper's son, former slave, sharecropper's son. And they went back, he and his cousins came here when they were four, when they were young, and then went back and told everybody about Ebor City. And then they came back to Ebor City and began to work and save up and literally began to build. So as they were building, they built these houses along 12th Avenue. To this day, those houses exist. And, and my grandfather is known as one of the founders of East Ebor. What they know was what has been known as the bottom. And if you're from Tampa, you don't know what the bottom is. The bottom is the area in East Ebor, well, is East Bor, is actually East Ebor. It's known that way because back in the beginning of Ebor City, all those stormwater actually washed down into that area. So that was the runoff area, the catch area. And ultimately ended up being one of the most valued places because the Junta family, which is still there today, actually had a grocery store in that area.
Now, is also, or Ebor Heights, is that also known as Ebor Heights, or is that a separate area?
That's a separate area.
Okay.
Separate area, yes. That area actually is just north of Ebor City proper and is the area where Cuscatin Park is, right? That's Ebor Heights area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're a long time, have huge roots here.
Yes, my dad's from West Tampa, my mom's from Ebor City. And, you know, and my maternal, my maternal grandmother's family has been here longer than anybody, 1890s and stuff. So it's, we have a long, long history, long history of being in Tampa.
And so you grew up here?
I am, I am. I have 14 year old son, 25 year old daughter. And, and my wife, Yolanda, is, is the most beautiful thing ever. And, you know, we have been together for 18 years.
Wow.
18 years.
So you went to school here?
I did. I got my master's degree from University of South Florida.
Wow.
I got my undergrad degree, my bachelor's, a science degree in civil and environmental engineering from Florida A and M University in Tallahassee, FAMU. And while I was there, I went and spent time in the Republic of South Africa studying engineering. And, and that was during, and I probably spent about 10 years off and on the continent of Africa from the age of 12 to 22. And, and that was very interesting. I saw apartheid. I saw the transition and I saw the actual democracy. My parents were both monitors for the first democratic election in 1994.
Wow. Yeah, that's part of the stories that I've heard is that you dated someone who is very influential's daughter. Is that a true story? Do you want to tell me about that?
That is a true story. That is a very true story. So, and everybody who knows me, a lot of people who meet me who've heard that they want me to tell them the story. So I did, in fact, date Nelson Mandela's granddaughter.
Oh, granddaughter, right, sorry.
And it wasn't, she, she really is not his biological granddaughter, but more his niece. She, her name was Rochelle. She is a wonderful woman. She actually would accompany him to everything that he went, that he went to after he was released from prison. And that was primarily due to the fact that his relationship with Winnie at that particular point had taken a turn for the worse. And Rochelle would go to everything with him. So I actually met her at an Ebony, South Africa luncheon for the launch of Ebony Magazine in South Africa.
Oh, okay.
And we ended up dating for a while. But, but that evening, the, probably the next, actually, next evening, I went out on a, on a date with her, this first date we went on. And this is how I discovered actually that she was actually his granddaughter. So I went and my parents were just, they knew because they saw the address that she gave me when she wrote it on the slip. So I got, got home and everything, showed the address, my dad's giggling, my mom's giggling. Why y'all giggling, you know? We got to the house finally and you see these turrets, machine gun turrets at the top of the fence, and they pointed down at the, at the gate. And so the guard came out and told me, hey, you, Mr. Smith? Yes. Said, Ms. Rochelle is waiting for you. I said, okay. Went up to, my dad says, have a good time, sir. So he's just giggling. So I went in and she came running out and she says, hey, you know, so, you know, hey. Went inside the house. And I looked to the left and I saw this huge watercolor portrait of Nelson Mandela. Now, mind you, I'd seen that same one in the mall, right? And it also was in his autobiography. When you read the book, just inside The Long Walk Home, you see that, that portrait. So I think, oh, yeah, I saw that in the book. That's pretty nice, you know? And she said, yeah, a friend of ours gave it to us. Oh, okay. So I said, I'll be back down in a minute. I'm gonna go say goodnight to my grandfather. I said, okay. So I was sitting there waiting. So as I'm sitting there waiting, she came back down. She says, okay, let's go. So we're waiting and she, and helped her put on her jacket. We walked out, about to walk out the door and says, Rochelle, I'd like to meet this young black American that you are about to take out, about, who's about to take you out. So I said, okay. So I'm sitting there waiting for him to come downstairs. And I'm standing at the, at the, at the base of the stairs. And, you know, it's like this, the long Gone with the Wind stairs. But he hits the first landing of the stairs and he turns. And I sat, I stood there and I was like, I'll be done. I just couldn't believe what I was seeing. I was like, damn, this is not Nelson Mandela.
Right.
And I was like, okay, Walt. Inside my head, I'm thinking, okay, don't act like you've never been anywhere before, Walt. Just stand there and be cool, you know? So I did. It was all good. So the relationship lasted for quite some long, quite some time between our families. And it was, it was good. It was good.
So that's one small story in an interesting lifetime, it seems like. So you grew up here, you graduated. What profession did you go into?
Engineering.
Engineering?
Yes.
And then you decided to get involved in politics because you've had a run before?
Well, you know, I decided to get involved in politics because I saw so many things globally, not just domestically, right? And I had a worldview that I felt was very different from everybody else. And people kept telling me, I like your viewpoints, right? And that you really ought to consider running for office. And so I kind of, I kind of watched and cultivated my thoughts and things like that. And I felt like there were a lot of communities that needed to be touched and helped in some way. For instance, I got started in the Urban League. Actually, that's not true. I actually got started as the, as the youngest vice chair of the Democratic Executive Committee in Leon County when I was in college.
Oh.
And when I graduated college and came down here, I worked for a short time with an engineering firm, with a local engineering firm. And then I got offered a job with the Urban League. And when I took that job with the Urban League, it was as a grant director. The job was to work with the pilot grant known as the toolkit grant, which is no longer obviously a pilot grant. But it's, it was used for the purposes of beginning revitalization processes in communities. More specifically, this one was geared towards West Tampa. The target was West Tampa. So as we looked at it, it was a $1.5 million budget. And Joanna Tocley was the CEO. And at that time, Shirley Knowles was the, was also the CFO, who's currently the clerk of the city. And so we, we, our job was to hire people, get people to work. I began writing curriculum for safety classes and workforce training and trained them to be able to go into the workforce in the most immediate situation, which was painting, roadway, right away maintenance, things of that nature, you know, construction. And ultimately, you know, it, it, it worked very well. We got a lot of houses. Most of the houses that you see in West Tampa got painted because of our program. And we saw a lot of them getting repaired because we had weatherization money that was there. So it was very, it was very successful. From there, after that grant was over with, I decided to go ahead and go out on my own. And my wife and I began to do cleanups, community cleanups. And we created a program called the Garbage In, Garbage Out Program, which we actually funded out of our own pocket. And my parents gave and, and I had some money and we, you know, we would do a little something with it. Every once in a while, somebody would come in and chip into it, like churches and things like that, to help us buy garbage bags or something like that. And then at the beginning, but ultimately, what ended up happening was a man by the name of Mark Wilfault, who is currently the director of Solid Waste, who then was up and coming, was in charge of the workforce there and driving trucks and things like that, maintenance. And he, he gave us everything we needed. Jim Pinkney at that time was over the, was called the Yes Team, was then called the Neat Team in its early stages, in its beginning, actually. And they all helped out tremendously. The mayor at the time was Dick Greco. And it was, it was just a great synergy. And he just gave me everything I needed. He always gave me everything I needed. And we did work in West Tampa and East Tampa. We made sure the alleys were clean. We dealt with environmental issues, making sure, because people were dumping in alleys, asbestos and things like that. And now, obviously, that's not good. So we made certain that that did not happen anymore. So we kind of patrolled it every month, you know? Same thing in East Ebor. Ultimately, we had to park putting East Ebor on the corner of 25th and 12th Avenue. My mother and I worked together to get that done. And it's right smack dab in the community where we live right now, you know? It transformed the community because people, the children were playing basketball in, on milk crates, hanging from, from utility poles.
Sure.
And using a ball, a large ball of paper as a basketball, you know? Can't make that up. That's literally what was going on. So we worked with them, with different churches, with different people, and brought them into the fold to bring people together, connect them, have that engagement that's needed, where typically you wouldn't be able to touch these people who are our representatives. We, my family doesn't believe in that, you know? We've always believed in bottom up representation and certainly engagement, critical engagement, to make sure that we have real transformation in communities. So that's where I started this whole thing. From there, it was just constantly doing something, you know?
And you have a show on WNF?
Yes, 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 yes. The show WMNF, the Sunday Forum. I did not intend on doing that one. That was, that was a total surprise, right? Otis Anthony was the, had been the host for 13 years plus on that show. And was legendary, you know, is legendary. And he was not tired of it. He just had some other things he wanted to do.
Sure.
In order for him to do that, he had to find a host, but he didn't want to just have any host, he said. And so he went out and we were at a panel discussion during Black History Month. And he, he always tells me that I just liked what you said, you know? And I couldn't even remember what the heck I said that, that, you know, that got him. But what I do recall is that he gave me his card and told me, I want you to get in contact with me so that we can, you can come and check out the show, you know? So I did. The second time I went in there, I was, I was being announced as the co-host. And next time I went in, I was, I was the host. I was gonna be the upcoming host. And I was like, wait a minute, when did that happen, you know? So he talked me into, he said, oh, brother Walt, come on, you can do this. I was like...
It's a big commitment.
It is a very big commitment, you know? I have enjoyed it.
It looks like you enjoy it.
Oh, man. This has been, that's been a real ride, you know? Currently, Kaia Wright is the current, is the interim hostess of the show. She's been doing a tremendous job. She sets people on fire now. But I intended that to happen so people have different viewpoints.
Sure.
You know, a different person, different viewpoints, okay? So the, the concept of the Sunday Forum, Otis felt needed to be broadened. He felt that I had more of a global view of things with regard to current affairs and things like that. And I didn't know how in the world I was gonna do that. And so the funniest story was Dusty Rhodes, the American Dream, had just passed away that Wednesday. I'll never forget it. That Sunday was gonna be my very first show. I was terrified. I was absolutely terrified.
Sure.
I was thinking, what in the hell am I gonna say? What am I gonna tell these people to keep them interested?
Right.
You know, to like me, you know? And I, I went in with this huge black folder of stuff. Because Otis, last thing Otis says to me is, you cannot have blank air.
Right.
Dead air. You cannot have it. I was like, oh, wow. And it's gonna be only you on the microphone, Walt. I was like, oh, wow. No pressure, no pressure. So I went in with this huge black three-pronged notebook with nothing but news and facts and things like that. And I rehearsed this thing and I went through it and I was, I was terrified. And you know what got me through it? It was not just my faith in the Lord God himself, but I tell you right now, it literally was the people. It was the people.
Sure, the calling.
It was the calling, yeah. You know, and they were, they were not easy on me, now mind you. They weren't easy on me.
They never are in double digits.
Oh, my God, they were. But they were looking forward to me being there, many of them. Many of them wanted Otis, you know, I got it, you know? But they just, they, they embraced me, right? It's almost like they rooted me on, right? And every week, I would wake up just happy.
Wow.
Right? To go to the show and do what, and do this work, right? Now, I'm a Christian, man. And I, you know, there was no more church, right? And that, because...
Cause you're at the studio.
Yeah, cause you're tired. You don't wanna go to eight o'clock service?
Sure.
And you sure can't go to eight o'clock service, then hotel to the place, to the radio station, right? So I'm sitting there and I said, went to my pastor and I said, listen, man, this is coming on my plate. What am I gonna do? So he said, listen, do you.
Right.
He said, this is my ministry here. That is your ministry, right? So, you know, I said, okay, all right, good. So my conscience was clear, right? So I, I went and the rest is history. The rest is history. So I was just, I was just really elated to be doing what I was doing. And it gave me the opportunity to give people, literally give people a voice when they did not have one.
Yes.
Right? This free advertising, right? And I would sneak away, finally, finally find a way to find loopholes to get people in. And that was it. It was just an easy fix, right? And I was getting, I was getting good news out to people. When I say good news, I mean quality information, right? Not all of it was good. But, you know, we, we challenged the status, right? And we continued to do that. And that was the basis, that's the basis of the Sunday Forum, is to challenge these things.
So speaking of challenging, let's talk a little bit about your race.
Okay.
It's hard to veer away from so many of the compelling stories about you personally. But, so now you're in the city council race. What made you want to run for this race at this time specifically?
Again, it was an opportunity. I ran in 2016 for House of Representatives, District 61. I was unsuccessful with that, with that race. I wasn't even sure that I was gonna do this. I really wasn't, right? I had had some people that had mentioned it to me, asked if I was gonna do that. And initially, the, the, the ask was for me to run in District Five.
Right.
Historically known as the Black District.
Right.
Right? And then someone suggested, quite a few people actually suggested to me, why don't you just run in District One, CDY?
Which is a big undertaking.
It is. It really is. It's a tremendous undertaking. And I spoke to my wife about it. I spoke to a couple of other people about it. And we just, we said, you know what? I saw the dynamic of what was happening in the city because I was, I've been working with so many people in West Tampa and things like that. When I saw what happened in West Tampa, that mass exodus of people that was taking place, and even in 2016, that was serious.
You mean people being displaced because of housing issues?
Yes, yes. Plus the backlog of people who were waiting for housing. Now, there's people being pushed to the, to the, to the outskirts of the city.
Really being pushed out. I mean, I think that was poor reporting, probably pushed out of the city.
Right, 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 right. Exactly, exactly. So, and I've, I've usually actually used, actually used the term pushed out, yes. And I don't mind using that term. And because the dynamics actually show that. Something had to be done. And I felt like nobody else who was running was going to have the type of sensitivity that I was gonna have because these are people that I've worked with before. These are circumstances that these people lived in, that I had worked with before. And it was, and, and it was, it was a personal, I took it personally. I took it very personally. What we see in the city right now is a city that is very diverse and yet still very segregated. It's not just racially segregated. It's segregated by, by wealth.
Class.
Class. Social status, the whole line.
Sure.
Not to mention the sprawl that exists, right? How do we create the connectivity that needs to be had in order for us to be a better city, right? For us to be a fair city, to give people a fair shot? These are the reasons why, the main reasons why overall I ran, I decided to run. I literally had been in the trenches with many of these people. I saw how buses weren't going through places like Sulfur Springs to get people to jobs.
Right.
Right? I saw how people were still looking for jobs, yet we were being told that our unemployment rate was at a 3.4 and increasing, 3.3, 3.4, 3.5 up until March of last year. It even reached four at one point, but went back down. But that was in the urban center. That was not at, that wasn't really the whole city. But we're led to believe, anybody who listened to that, would, would be led to believe that this is the whole city. That's not true. It's not the case. I knew that. My students knew that. They were being trained to combat that. And that was, was one of the reasons why, another reason why I ran, why I decided to run. We have to have that, we have to prepare these people ourselves, period, to be able to take on these jobs that are coming into this city. This, this is not a joke. This is serious.
Sure.
Right? This isn't just a matter of policy. This is boots on the ground activity that has to take place in communities with people. And the elected official, the person they're putting in office, this is not a joke. So, you know, I, you know, there's a lot, a lot to it, a lot to it. And it's not something that just takes place in chambers.
So tell me what you think differentiates you from the other candidates in the race. Tell me about your platform. I mean, it's obviously that you were motivated because, you know, you're, you're people powered. You want to run a people powered campaign. You saw lives being ruined. You see inequities in your city. And, and that makes you compelled to want to be the people, the person to help fix and change that. So how does that craft your platform? And tell me, you know, for people who are resonating with what you're saying, but they want to know, you know, the nuts and bolts and the policies of what, what you're gonna do as a city councilman, what that's gonna look like.
Right. Let me be clear about this issue.
Yes. I like clarity.
Let me be very clear about this issue. What I am going to do is, is really not the issue, right? It is, the issue is what are we going to do?
Absolutely.
The issue is how am I going to engage the communities and the people to facilitate something that has not been fully achieved, fully realized, right? What does that look like? What that looks like is exactly, is what somebody said to me is altruistic, right? Walt, you can't get out there and reach everybody. Well, I know I can't reach everybody.
Right.
But I can try. People have organized in one, two areas and then it caught on like wildfire, right? Revolutions begin with an idea. We've heard this before, right? Revolutions will begin, begin with an idea and then action. And then it catches on wildfire. That's what this is. It is a reconditioning. It's a revolution. This is a reconditioning of, of people. It's a reconditioning of a mindset that says that I'm here in Tampa, in the Tampa Bay area, and I am no longer going to be excluded from all of the amenities, all of the growth, all of the development that's taking place in the core of the city. All of us have the ability and have the right to take part in that, right? How do we resolve that issue? What, what that looks like is connectivity through transit, right? What that looks like is recognizing that we have train tracks that are dormant, that are just sitting there, that can be used, right? What that looks like is people being able to get to jobs. What that looks like is uh people being able to get to jobs under much better conditions than what they've had to in the past.
Mm hmm.
Um, what it looks like is that person who was making, who was, who was eleven years in prison.
Right.
Who now has the opportunity to work for an engineering firm because he's been specially trained
Mm hmm.
to take on the new jobs and the new type of tech, with the new type of technologies that are coming here to Tampa. It looks like a port that is going to under, that's going to undergo a tremendous transformation that makes, what, some eighty-five thousand jobs?
Mm hmm, I don't know the number, but I've heard a lot of candidates talk about it.
Eighty-five thousand jobs, directly or indirectly. After admitting and after talking with them and recognizing the need to make that connection, it looks like that connection, it looks like inclusion, it looks like what it's gonna take for us to really be that city, that Mecca.
Mm hmm.
Right, that international Mecca that we can be. We have an airport, a seaport, we have, we have great weather. Right, you know, it's cold now, but it's, we have great weather, right?
Weather, but anyway.
You know, but I mean Tampa has, has it all, right? Everybody needs to take part in that.
Mm hmm.
Uh why not?
Well, let me, let me, let me ask you some questions, and then I wanna talk about some specific issues like I like to do with all the candidates that come through. But from what I'm learning is participation in these elections in general is low. Um, they range anywhere, when we're talking about these elections, I'm talking about city elections. Um, and they range anywhere from what I've been looking at the past stats, from fifteen to twenty, twenty-four percent at the highest, if we're lucky. Um, and unfortunately, a lot of the, that percentage in general, um of that small percent is divided, is decided by South Tampa, is decided by, you know, more affluent areas. Um, so I guess what I'm hearing is awesome, you know, I mean, especially as President of the Progressive Caucus, talking about bold progressive ideas and inclusion and, you know, making sure that everybody um is, you know, equally accessible to the the beauty and the 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 growth of our city is if there's a small percentage of people who are engaging this and picking our leaders, how do we get a message like yours that resonates of inclusion um out there and motivate people to show up at the election, to empower them, to know their rights to vote, so that they have candidates or we have candidates who are representing us that care about this? Because I talked to a lot of candidates and, you know, they kind of cater their message or, you know, it's really all aimed at South Tampa first, you know, that's the number one district that everybody's trying to appeal to because they show up in the highest number of percentages, and then, you know, maybe North Tampa or another district. And then, of course, always, you know, the 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 marginalized communities where, you know, it's it's shown that turnout is the least, you know, get, you know, a few, you know, ideas, or we'll have one person representing us on staff, or, you know, they have, you know, some, some, some soft promises. So how do, you know, we get great candidates who wanna, you know, make sure that they represent everybody's message out to motivate those, everybody to vote for that candidate?
The first thing is that we have to stop lying to ourselves and recognize that we, that we have, um, we have to stand on the courage of our conviction.
Mm hmm.
Now, that, that, now, this is, this is just the real, we have to stand on the courage of our convictions.
Sure.
Uh, we know that something's not right. What do you do?
I mean, I know what I do.
So the first, right, 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 so the first, exactly, so the first, so so do it, you get my point?
Sure.
So you see somebody that you know is that, is that, is that person
Mm hmm.
that can represent you well.
Right.
That's only one part of the equation.
Mm hmm.
Who's backing her?
Right.
Who's backing her?
Sure.
Right?
Mm hmm.
This is not, uh, this is not, uh, I I I always say, you know, we gotta play chess, we can't play checkers.
Mm hmm.
Right, this is chess, this is the real deal.
Mm hmm.
Okay, so if you want change, then you have to act on it.
Mm hmm.
Right, uh, we, I always say about, about my campaign, um, I was hesitant in beginning to refer to it as a campaign.
Hmm.
So I always say, this campaign for this seat
Mm hmm.
is not just a campaign, but a movement.
Hmm, I like that.
That is seventeen years in the making, that, then it was seventeen, now it's eighteen years. Right?
Happy anniversary.
Thank you very much, but eighteen years in the making, in the making, you know? And that's not just lip service, that's real, this is all measurable for me.
Mm hmm.
You check the record, you know, there are people that are out there that will tell you, yep, he touched me.
Mm hmm.
Touch, touch, but he, he touched my life, you know what I mean, like, he touched my life.
Yes.
Right, so my point is that we, we made, we we made things happen, right? And that, I I'm, and I didn't do it by myself, is my point.
Mm hmm.
I did it with the help of organizations, with people, a- and we did it on a smaller scale, we did, we did it big, but we did it on a smaller scale. Now imagine if I, if I touched hundreds of people, just me.
Right.
Imagine now what would happen with a movement of people, a movement of churches, a movement of organizations, and city, and the city government behind what I'm talking about, a city government that actually, that actually uh uh invests in workforce expansion, workforce training, getting people uh connected to uh to the city, uh dealing with the issue of homelessness, resolving that issue, imagine what would happen if we invested in that transformation.
It would benefit our entire city.
Exactly, and not, not to mention the fact that we organize, as I said earlier, what did I say earlier? About me being in council, it doesn't begin and end with me being in council, because it ends with the people, working with the people to make sure, that, that's a very simple uh uh answer.
Mm hmm.
But the work is very difficult.
Absolutely.
But you gotta have, you can't have Kool-Aid in your veins, you gotta have, it's gotta be blood, sweat and tears, ready to rock and roll.
Right.
You know?
Well, um, let's talk about a few issues. Excuse me, it's like we're both, we're both recovering, everyone who's been on this podcast has been sick recently. This, this uh cold has taken a hit on this, this municipal election for everyone, but um, so some things that when I have certain guests on, especially guests of faith, who are very outspoken about their faith, um, that I like to kind of touch on, um, and I ask every candidate this, whether they're outspoken about their faith or not, um, is kind of a separation between church and state.
Right.
Um, especially now, um, when there are democratic legislators who are, you know, proposing bills of, you know, mandated prayer in school. So for somebody who feels, you know, so compelled by their faith, and a lot of candidates, especially a lot of African American or black candidates, you know, who are very, very religious, um, I always like to ask about, you know, the separation between church and state, and as a elected official and as a leader, how far you see that going and, you know, kind of your views on that?
It separates the church and state.
Yes.
Uh, you know, that's, that's the law of land, right? Uh, yet there was, yet we say a pledge of allegiance that says one nation under God.
Mm hmm, which was that in the fifties.
Right, exactly, exactly, recognized, duly recognized. Uh, you know, um, I come from a culture
Mm hmm.
where, and 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 there are different narratives on, on, on the issue.
Sure.
And I respect everybody's narrative, I'll, I'll, let me just say that first of all. Oh. I respect everybody's narrative, I respect their right to prayer, I respect their, their right to have a moment of silence, whatever their religion is.
Right.
Um. Uh, that's about it, I did, I really don't, there's, there's not, you know, uh, we have to maintain that respect.
Oh, good, thank you.
That, that we, we have to maintain that respect.
I, I think so.
Yeah, absolutely, and and but there are so many people that don't.
I mean, it's hard.
I was a Muslim for, for six years of my life.
Oh.
Right, um, and there were, there were reasons why, but the point is, is that, um, uh, there's, I recognize it, both Abrahamic religions.
Right.
Right, um, and uh, it's just that Islam uh taught me uh, a type of discipline that I wanted to have in my life, that I needed in my life at that time. Uh, my, my going back to Christianity uh does not change the respect that I have for, and and for the beauty and for the uh the things that I learned under Islam.
Hmm.
Uh, I have a godfather who will seek, right? Uh, so I, I, the, the, though, in terms of religion and understanding separation of church, church and state, I get it. Uh, but but it's just kinda hard to do, I'm gonna tell you right now.
Sure.
If you don't believe in a higher power at this point,
Mm hmm.
you know, it's like, with everything that's going on, the first thing you say is my God, right? It's like the first thing everybody, everybody says it, right? Uh, you know, it's hard not to, and 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 who who wants to, you know, there, there are those who don't want to. Uh, but I don't feel uh uh compelled to disrespect anybody else's beliefs.
I appreciate that. Um, let's talk a little bit about adult use marijuana and making that legal in Florida in general, is that something that you support? As opposed to just medical marijuana?
Right, what they, what.
They would call it recreational, but now advocates wanna clarify that it's a dual.
Adult use marijuana, yes, I I support responsible adult use, and and I like the terminology, like terminology. Because, well, y- you know, uh, now, understand, understand. Uh, I also come from a community where, uh, you know, that still is not cool.
Hmm.
You know, when I say it's not cool, as a parent.
Sure.
Uh, that's one thing, as as one who grew up around it, uh, you know, I recognize what it is, you know? I, you know, I have, I probably have a hard time seeing my own son or my daughter using it, you know what I mean?
Right.
I I I still, that visual, you know, still, I got, I'd have to get used to.
Sure.
Uh, but of course, I'm not gonna sit there and encourage that type of thing, you know what I mean, in terms of, in terms of my own children.
Out joints.
Right, I'm not gonna be passing out joints, right, exactly. Yeah, he'll, he'll take, you know, no, not doing that. Uh, you know, here's a son, here's a little walk, go ahead, you know, knock yourself out.
But you do support other people having the right to do as grown adults.
Absolutely.
Consent.
consenting. Responsible, and and that's, I think that right there alone, just that, the terminology alone, is what, is what's most important to me in terms of the responsible use.
And how about um Medicare for All? We see um more recently, some of the presidential candidates are finally, um, Democratic presidential candidates are finally kind of embracing it, it's becoming more mainstream. And there's an initiative here in Florida to get expansion of Medicare on the ballot, Luis Viera is personally crusading that.
Yes.
Um, so do you believe that the end result in general, you know, one day, you know, access to to medicine and healthcare is a human right and should be, you know, given to everybody? Do you believe in Medicare for All?
Yes, I do.
You're ma- you're making these easy for me, you're making these easy for me.
You know, it's the fire, the, what do you call it, the the lightning round?
That's what somebody else said.
Right, right, see, see, but no, I think, I think that, um, we have, you know, having been one who has not had health insurance
Mm hmm.
for a period, uh, because of the cost
Yeah.
of health insurance, it's, it's astronomical, and the markets know what they're doing, what they're doing.
Sure.
You know, it's just like gas, right, gasoline, you know? Come on, you know, eat, go to, go to, just close your eyes, cover your eyes, and drive down the street, don't, don't do, don't really do that. But go down the street and just pick a gas station, right? You'll see numbers that are astronomical in one side, and on another side, they're low.
Sure, closer the interstate, it's always higher.
Yeah, but don't, don't tell me that's because of some war in the Middle East that's causing this.
Mm hmm.
You choose, you know.
It's market driven.
Come on.
Sure.
It's market driven, and that's, and that's the reality of what's, of what the situation is there, you know?
So here's another issue, especially with the municipal candidates, that um I found has been interesting. Um, you know, there's a fight for fifteen, um, you and I kind of briefly talked about it. Um, none of the other candidates seem to know it by that name. Um, but that's the fight to make sure that we raise the minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour. And now, locally, what I've been told city, from the city, is that, you know, there's budget issues, it's been a tight budget, that um in the next coming years, bonds will be coming up, and we're gonna have to figure out how to pay for those. Um, and that fifteen dollars an hour for city workers is just not within the budget. Um, so, you know, in that regards, um, it is a, it is a question of how can we afford to do that? But overall, in general, do you support raising the minimum wage to at the very minimum fifteen dollars an hour?
Yes, absolutely, no question about it. Uh, yeah, there, there's, there's no, I mean, that's not even a, an argument, you know what I mean? I don't even see how anybody could ever wanna even argue that point. However, I do understand what the, what the plight of the city is, from the standpoint of trying to figure out how we're gonna do that.
Sure.
Right, so in all fairness, yeah, I I gotta figure out how we're gonna do it. Uh, we want to, just how?
Well, not everybody wants to, but um.
Well, yeah, yeah, exactly, but Walter does.
Walter does. Um, and how about um LGBTA rights? Um, you know, in city council, they've already had some members, um, you know, put a ban on conversion therapy. So it is something that comes across um city council desks at some point, um, standing up and and making sure that, you know, we're, we're protecting all marginalized communities, but also LGBTA. Would you say that you're dedicated to making sure that you support that community?
Absolutely, absolutely, uh, I think that therapy is cruel.
Yes.
I mean, it's no question, but it is cruel, I mean.
Mm hmm.
Wow, yeah, it it is, I've, I've seen some documentaries on it, and and, I mean, they even have TV shows now that address the issue, it's how, it's how serious it is, because it's the only way to actually get forced a narrative.
Mm hmm, it's abusive, for sure.
Right, right.
It's abuse. Um, how about gun reform? I looked at the uh, the uh endorsement form that you submitted, um, and it was, it was one that actually checked all the boxes. Some of the other candidates have been hesitant due to their law degrees or whatnot, um, so.
Don't make me cuss on this shit.
It sounds like you're committed to sensible gun reform.
Absolutely.
Um, you know, I think that everybody agrees that there is the Second Amendment, and people should, you know, have the right to, to own weapons, but where it comes down to assault rifles and doing background checks and making sure that, you know, we're doing our due diligence and and sensible gun reform, um, seems to be, for some reason, something that divides the country, which is so strange to me. Um, tell me but a little bit about um your stance on gun reform.
Um, it was, it, my, my position on gun reform is something that was shaped and formed uh primarily by my experiences in the Republic of South Africa
Hmm.
and Malawi.
Hmm.
Um, I, I lived in a, I, I was in a boarding school, um, as, as a child with exiles.
Wow.
From different countries during the early eighties, uh, you know, you had a lot of civil wars that were going on.
Mm hmm.
Uh, because even though there was independence, there was the issue of who's going to run the country
Hmm.
post-independence. Uh, I saw the misery of those, of those children, uh, even though they were exiles, they were well overdue, so to speak. Um, it was misery. Um, many of them had seen things that, and I, I saw things as an adult with regard to guns. Uh, you know, child soldiers, uh, people who have, who, I saw people killed. You know, and this, this is not uh something that's, that's made up, it, it actually happened. You know, I, I have friends who were killed, I, I watched uh violence.
It's awful, I'm sorry.
Crazy, crazy violence. Um, many of the things that we've read about that happened there, I was there.
Wow.
Um, so coming home and having to um interact with uh young adults
Mm hmm.
who experienced this type of violence every single day uh in the Tampa Bay area was not uh foreign to me. Yet, it was still odd, because here I am now, back home, in what is not a third world country.
Right.
Uh, yet, in the community that I'm working, uh, it is like a third world country.
Hmm.
Because that's, that's the way people are treated, that's what, 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 what happens, right?
Right.
Um, so when you talk about access to guns, um, the violence i- is incredible, um. The access to guns is not something that just happens because somebody jumped in, you know, somebody stole a gun out of somebody's house. I said it before and I'll say it again, it doesn't happen because of that. Doesn't just happen because somebody went to uh uh stole it out of somebody's car or their mom and dad's gun, no. There's access, there are access to guns by way of people coming into communities and selling those guns out of the trunk of their car. Okay, and I'm not just telling you what I think, I'm telling you what I've what I've been told time and time again. You know, and people from different sides of town who don't know each other aren't just making this up, this is what it is.
Yeah, so you're personally affected by it.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I've seen it, I I had a student who um I had one student that while that that while training, you know, he he felt compelled, he was not, he was forced to shoot somebody. Right? And we had to sit around worried as to whether or not he had killed him. Luckily, he had not. Right? Uh we we talk about things like uh uh kids shooting other kids in the street. You know, it just this is, you know, and now we look at what happened down in Fort Lauderdale. Okay, that's kinda that's still close to home, yet it sparked the revolution of youngsters. Here's that revolution again, right? It sparked the re- a revolution of youngsters now who have transformed the way that people view young people and their thought processes, you know, and their experiences. And this with the arms situation, with the with the gun control situation, is something that can only be controlled at this particular point by organizing with communities and forcing ourselves to really take a long, hard, ugly look at what we need to do in order to eliminate uh that ill, that gun culture from our communities. And getting rid of those people, pushing those people out who would bring that to our children. Now, you know, mind you that I I don't, I I wouldn't, you know, I I don't have a problem with owning a gun personally to protect my family and so forth. And and I don't have a problem with anybody from that standpoint, except, you know, let's think about what we're doing. You know, I'm I'm not with all the gun culture, like I got twelve guns, I'm not, you know, that's not me. But you have people that that think like that.
What about workers' rights and unions, would you say you're pro-union? How about the environment? What are your views environmentally, especially, you know, every candidate I talk to says that there's no denying the fact that Tampa's the most vulnerable with climate change and rising sea level affecting our communities, affecting McGill Air Force Base, Tampa General. Uh we're the we're one of the most vulnerable cities in general uh when it comes to to sea level rise. So many people, regardless of where they live or, you know, even their socioeconomic class realize that and they know that eventually we have to, our goal should be towards a hundred percent renewable energy and conserving, you know, the parts of Florida that we love. You look at Pinellas and it's, they've banned the straws, the plastic straws, which is a small token, but it's still a movement towards something. Would you say that you're committed to environmental?
Protection, environmental justice, absolutely. I've worked long and hard in that in that arena. I'm I'm known for my position on those things. I wanna go back to something you mentioned. About unions, there ain't a chance to really address that. State of Florida has done a a a heck of a job with regard to uh union busting activities.
I mean, all of America, but definitely Florida for sure.
Right, well, I mean, you know, historically speaking, the South has never been a a great place for unions, right? It's always been turned around because we were so agrarian. And it was viewed as being a socialist concept that was not uh accepted here. And 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 there's there's a much deeper issue regarding that 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 whole thing in terms of the history. However, uh it is critical that we do whatever we can do to establish partnerships with unions, to have the type of apprenticeships and training established for people to go into jobs. As I said earlier, the jobs that are coming here to Tampa, no question about that. So we have to make certain that we 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 address that issue. So I I am in support of the unions. I've trained people to be able to go into them and told them a lot of it. So I do support that and certainly support going to uh do outreach in schools in order to make sure they understand the history, understand
I like that idea.
what's going on with it.
Right, yeah, I mean, I talked to so many young people in trade unions, even when they just come to my house about unions and, oh, my dad used to be part of a union and I don't really understand and my boss pays me okay, and absolutely the value of how they've shaped our workforce and workers' rights and just the things that we take for granted has been lost, you know. And that's that leads me to my next question, segue into supporting public. Thank you, into supporting public education. I like to uh talk to all the guests, even though city council doesn't have much influence in that regard per se. There is some zoning, some that might come into play generally, but there's a move to privatize education, you know, especially in marginalized communities that haven't had access to good education because we've neglected them, we've financed things through property taxes, so there's an inequity in schools. Um and a lot of people in those communities feel that they have no other choice and they've embraced the school choice movement because they can't wait for education to to be fixed. So it's a complicated issue, but I feel like on par with attack of, you know, the unions, education is part of it and that there's this bait and switch, you know, to privatize education. So would you say you're a proponent and you're committed to public education as opposed to the privatization and charter school movement?
Absolutely, uh I hell, I I work in a charter school, right? But it's geared, it's not corporate, it's geared towards addressing those issues, literally addressing those issues and it's account held accountable for that. Uh addressing those issues that that uh the children in uh these areas, this particular community and beyond need to have addressed. When you talk about special needs and you and I, I think, we and I have had this conversation before, dealing with the issue of special needs and being careful about the messaging that's being put out regarding uh how we what 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 we do regarding uh how to educate our children in special need situations. My son was born with bilateral hearing loss. Had it not been for the fact that uh we are able to, uh my wife and I are educators, we don't know where we'd be with this situation, right? And a lot of people don't have that resource. The public school has made, is is not done a good job with regard to that. So specialized schooling through a charter school or even through a private school, some private schools work well in those situations. Now, that's in all fairness, when you look at at the reality of it. However, my support of the public school system is unwavering, without question, right? I wanna see that happen. Now, with regard to city council uh and its responsibility to uh or or its its ability to address education, I've had people say, well, you're not on the school board, so you can't really do anything about education. I say au contraire. Okay, because they haven't seen, you know, clearly, they're not engaged enough to know that you have kids that are, a large number of these kids that are coming to school that cannot even say, can't even spell their names. Okay, they can't even tell you the colors when they get to kindergarten.
Oh, sure, I've taught kindergarten in those schools.
So, yeah, so you know what I'm talking about, and so and it's a large number.
And it's more than just education, they don't have access to food, they don't have jackets when it's cold. They have no access to medicine, so they have skin conditions that distract them through the day. It's a it's such a, it's a large, there's so many, we could talk about education for hours.
The what I'm saying to you is that we can organize with communities find out what need you to do, wanna raise monies, use our statuses as representatives to go out and get money to bring back to communities in order to in order to make things work.
The bully pulpit is what it's called, I believe. All right, so I only have two questions left, which is good, cause we're nearing our timeframe. Is, you know, we've talked about affordable housing and how it compelled you to jump into this race, you know. So what would you say, because it's such a complex problem, you know, the city's revitalizing, there's gentrification, is the answer to the affordable, or maybe not the answer, but some answers? There's not one easy Band-Aid, but some answers or some things that we should be working for towards addressing the affordable housing crisis?
One of the things that we have to recognize is that Tampa has uh housing, right? In many communities, that's just, that's a blight, that's become a blight. Because uh you have people who are landowners or hu- or they own a house uh that they've been renting out or should be renting out and it's just sitting there dormant. No one keeping it up at all, you have way too many situations like that in these communities. So that's one, we gotta hold these people accountable and make certain these houses are, if we need to take them or take it away from them, then fine, let's take it away from them. Whatever we need to do to confiscate that and make it work for our community, let's do it. Then we have buildings that uh that possibly could be used as uh shelters, transitional shelters. We have people like Gerald McCants, uh who's a local architect uh from Tennessee State University. Gerald has made uh has designed houses that are uh small houses that uh that are sustainable, uh and they work, you know. Then we have incentives for those people who are homeowners uh to utilize the in-law suite concept. If they want to do that and they can do that, there should be some incentives perhaps. Uh not perhaps, definitely be incentives for someone like that, because here you're offering this to someone, it's on your property. That needs to be considered. So again, I don't know what those incentives would necessarily be, but you know, we are, these are things that we need to look at. Now, when we look at the issue of low-income housing, that is something that we need to consider uh very seriously because of the backlog of people who are um who are out there waiting for housing. We need to find a way to get them uh housed closer into the city. So that they're not having as much of a difficult time getting, well, so they're not having a difficult time getting to those jobs to get to or have access to the same type of amenities that other people have, even hospitals. They need to have access to that. So there there's a lot to consider there uh in terms of where we'll put it, how it will work and what incentives we can use in order to uh find alternative ways of dealing with this now. The Sodowsky Fund has been robbed like a billion times over. And uh, you know, we we have to find other ways to do it. Partnerships with developers will probably also, will will definitely be a big help as well. So there are uh answers, but of course, like you said, you call it a band-aid, they call it a silver bullet. And I always say, if somebody says they have an answer for it, then they're lying.
Well, not a lot of people have had an answer for it, so. So here's my final question that I I generally end up with. Because honestly, on our progressive caucus forum, it's the one we get the the most diverse answers to. And we don't have, you know, enough diverse candidates, but when it comes to racial profiling, when we talk about the divisions in the city, when we talk about the inequities, you know, a lot of it is based racially, especially as an African-American, black candidate. What do you feel like are some of the things that we need to do to address the racial inequalities, racial profiling? You know, some of the racism that's, you know, left over for so much of the Jim Crow era that's still pervasive in the South, but definitely in our city? What are some things that we can do as an elected official in city council to start addressing these issues that we see?
We need to have, we need to, we need to have the, as I always say, the uh hard discussions, right? And we have a bad tendency to say, well, that's divisive, stay away from that. Uh we don't wanna talk about that, no, that's a bad idea, that's a very bad idea. The good idea is to have that discussion, the good idea is to is to address it and deal with it. The good idea is to is to look at ways to deal with inclusion in in fairness. We are, as I said earlier today, we are still a very segregated city with where access is still blocked by much of the same racist attitudes that have been pervasive throughout our history. We cannot continue to allow that to happen. Profiling uh is something that I I I will I will say this, uh I can appreciate Julian Holt, Ju- Juliet Holt, uh in her office, working with the police department and the sheriff's department and establishing the the record, the uh program to recognize when people have mental health issues versus drug addictions and things.
I think John Dingfelter was saying that he's actually working in a lot of those programs.
As an attorney with.
Do you think that when we're talking about relationships with um the police, that we need to start talking about community policing, that we need to talk about maybe examining training methods? That there there are definite pathways to, you know, other than picking one side of the coin, Black Lives Matter or Blue Lives Matter or, you know, um having this argument that we need to actually address some of the issues to make both citizens and police officers more safe?
Yeah, there there needs to be a dialogue, uh uh there has been dialogue, but it needs to be a serious dialogue. Not so holding hands and singing, we shall overcome, that's not gonna cut it, that's just not gonna do it. There needs to be some hard training, there needs to be some real understanding, there needs to be some agreement and action that says, this is what, this is where we are now, right? We cannot uh continue down that pathway of saying, well, that'll do. The the we're at this point now, so that'll do, that's not okay and it won't do. There are um a billion other things that we can, that we can uh be focusing in on together. And I think that, I think that when we, as we start to look at how these these uh things work in the city and we start getting the transparency and we start to see uh what we can do to get around these issues and 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 take down the walls. We gotta take down the walls, you know.
Would you say one of the most important things is having diversity in our elected officials?
Absolutely, no question about it, no question about it. We must have that.
That we can't really address these issues correctly unless we have more diversity represented in our elected officials?
That's right, that's right, no question about it, I think that's that's definitely one. We gotta be willing to 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 make some some real hard moves with communities. Some real community buy-in, uh people who who believe in this thing. We gotta learn to force this issue, this is the issue that has to be forced with regard to race relations and how we deal with each other. There are those who say, I don't care what one side thinks or the other. Well, that's until something happens. And then when something happens now, you 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 want you wanna do something about it, right? That is a, that is a uh reactionary act. We can't have that, we gotta be proactive.
Absolutely.
And preemptive. And we have got to do things that count, that that will shed that 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 stigma of the of the long history that we have regarding that issue. regarding that issue. So, um, yeah, I I think, yeah.
Well, I'm sure that's another issue that we could talk about for hours. We're running out of time, but what I would like to do is, is there anything that we haven't covered or talked about um, in your campaign that you want voters or listeners to know about?
Well, you know, I have five main issues that I'm focusing in on. Economic development, social justice, environmental protection, uh, historic preservation. And uh, making certain that we have watch this now. Sustainable infrastructural development.
Oh, I do like that word, sustainable.
Sustainable. Infrastructure development. Those are all very, um, those are all my, my platform issues. And uh, and what it does in the end is um, in in terms of my focal, my my focal point, uh, what it does in the end is it, I want to work with people uh, throughout the city, communities throughout the city on issues of connectivity. Uh, what makes, what allows us to work together to make that difference? To create a city that's sustainable. Right? One that works and works well for everybody.
Holistically.
Holistically. We've got to make that happen.
We do.
And unless we are, uh, unless we are very cognizant of it, unless we have our finger on the pulse of what's going on, I like to say, we are one, right? And and why do I say that? Because I can't do that by myself. And it does take boots-on-the-ground engagement. And I'm, I can't be the only one with boots on.
I feel, yeah.
Right? And that's the reality. And all those items that I just mentioned are items that are issues and items that need to be addressed seriously in this city.
Absolutely, yes. So how can people get involved in your campaign? Tell me, what do you need the most help with?
Um, I, I need help with uh, knocking doors, the volunteers. Because this is citywide and I'm not sure I can hit the whole city.
It's a big undertaking.
That's a big undertaking. So I'll do the best I can, uh, but I encourage people to get in contact with the, with the.
What's the best way to get in touch with you?
Um, on uh, WalterforTampa.com on the website, uh, on Facebook and also Walter for Tampa. There's a phone number at eight one three four 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 seven seven, I'm sorry, seven one one nine. That's eight one three four 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 seven one one nine. There is uh, uh, the email, Walter@WalterforTampa.com. Walter@WalterforTampa.
And I'm assuming you need donations. It looks like one of the candidates who jumped into your race dumped a huge amount of their own personal money and are self-funding, so it's never fun to run against those types of candidates. So how can people donate to you? What's the best way they can donate to your campaign?
WalterforTampa.com.
And any specific amount, five dollars, ten dollars?
Every, every penny counts. Every penny counts. Not a penny.
Every dollar counts?
Yeah, yeah, we, we appreciate the, the, this, the, the way that makes sound, but we also appreciate the kind that make, that folds.
Right, right.
So we appreciate everything that, that uh, uh, that has happened. We appreciate those folks out there who have supported us, who believe in us. Now it's time to really, really get to work. We need your help, folks, please. Make your donations at WalterforTampa.com. We gotta get those, we gotta get out there and knock those doors. We gotta get signs out. We gotta talk to folk. Uh, we gotta get our message out.
So that people can vote on what day? What is the, the day, the magic day?
Uh, February twenty fifth.
Is when early voting starts?
Until March third. March fifth is election day.
March fifth, so if you haven't early voted, you have to be at the polls on March fifth. What about early, um, like vote by mail? Those go out now. So vote by mail ballots have dropped, so if you're signed up to vote by mail, then it's time to start casting your votes. Make sure that if you aren't, you participate in early voting. That's the absolute best way to vote. You can go to maybe ten participating libraries. You don't have to be in your district. You can go whenever they're open. And then if for some reason that doesn't happen, make sure that you are, if you live in the city of Tampa, that you are at your poll on March fifth to make sure that your voice is heard in the city election. Thank you so much for joining us today. It's been an absolute pleasure having you as a guest. I wish you the best of luck in your race.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
To all of our listeners, you can always email me at J. Vaughn vs. Victor, A U G H N, the number thirty at gmail dot com. We love hearing your comments or getting any feedbacks or asking questions to our listeners. As always, we appreciate you listening and I hope you have a great evening. Thank you so much to listening to Reclaiming My Mind. Again, I am your host, Jessica Vaughn. Our guest was Walter L. Smith the second, uh, candidate for District One, um, which is citywide. Thanks again and have a great evening.